Okay, if everybody is ready. Mr. Manager, Counsel, Ms. Herman. Good morning. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for August 23rd, 2022. It is now 10:00 a.m. And you'll notice that I have three young men beside me. We have a special day today because they're gonna, they're gonna work with us through the consent agenda. They're here to accept a donation, and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. I'll introduce them after our roll call. Let's start with a salute to the flag. Cooper, would you lead us in a salute to the flag? He's right over here, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I'm Hartung Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill Vice Chair. Bob Lucy.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So just briefly, before we get started, again, these three young men are here to accept the donation. And I thought it would be nice for them to have an opportunity to sit and experience a commission meeting from a completely different perspective. So and I'll, we'll go further here, and I'm not gonna tell any last names, but we have Cooper, we have Lucas, and we have Dominic. And they are part of Pop Warner Football. So with that, let's move on to the, the next item on the agenda. Mr. Manager, is, is Brian here?
Uh, Brian is en route from the airport, I believe.
That's what I understood. So can we move item number three? Are you okay with that?
Certainly.
Okay, all right, we'll take that in just a few minutes. Madam Clerk, would you, or Mr. Manager, excuse me, would you take us into public comment? Item number four.
Item number four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have Rick Snow.
Mr. Snow, welcome.
Washoe County resident. There's no way I can get through everything I have to say in three minutes. So I have three individual packets, one for Mr. Edwards, one for Mr. Brown, and the other can pass between the people on the commission so they will understand our concerns. The second thing I have, uh, seven weeks ago, I called code compliance. Didn't have any reason to know that the manager was on vacation, so I followed up calling Mr. Dave Salarrel. And, uh, he didn't get back with me. Jonna Chisholm did. She was upset that I went over her head. I gave her a list of eight places where we have double residences on a piece of property, which is in violation of county code. And, uh, it's now seven weeks. It'll be eight weeks tomorrow. I've called and made a point of Dave Salarrel going again to No avail. I've called Jonna Chisholm twice, trying to get an update, see what's going on, and they're just, they're turning a deaf ear. So now I have a list of properties, so you will be not, it won't be ambiguous. You'll know exactly where we have the problem, and they can follow up. I would like them to follow up because we don't hear back. We don't know what's being done. We have, right now, we have 13 people living on separate pro, on different properties out there. That's about 10% of the people out there have a second residence on their property. It's overwhelming the roads, the system, everything out there is in disarray because this isn't being handled. So I'll give you a copy of this and pass between you, and hopefully I hear back from either Dave or from Jonna, and I'll turn it over to the next person.
Thank you, Ms. Snow.
Next up, we have Kurt Schlegel-Milch, followed by Elise Weatherly, and then Mark Newman.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm Kurt Schlegel-Milch. Don't worry about the name. I, I go by Dr. Kurt. I used to be the director at the VA Medical Center. I retired eight years ago, but I decided to retire in the community. I love it here. I've lived here over 18 years this time, and when I was younger, I lived here too. In any event, um, I wanted to come today because in the last about three months, I've developed a significant concern about, um, the integrity of the process of our elections. And by "our," I mean nationwide, not just Washoe County, but I decided to maybe give airing to my concerns with the local officials first. So I understand you all had some discussions on this a few months back, and, uh, something I had seen in the newspaper. At the time, I really didn't know what was going on, but about three months ago, I took, as they say, the red pill, for those of you who are familiar with The Matrix, and I learned so much about election integrity and the process of elections that, uh, I'm truly shocked. And as an American, I truly value my freedom. Our democracy, or the democracy component of our constitutional republic is critically important, and I think it's critically important that we can have confidence in our elections. And, uh, no personal affront intended, but right now, after what I've seen and read, and I've seen hundreds of hours of videos and read loads of documents, I, I can say I don't have confidence in our elections. So getting to the, the fundamental issue I have, it is with the election machines. And I believe in our county, we use Dominion, uh, but all the, all the election machines are basically about the same. We should be able to trust these things, um, and quite frankly, we can't. They're so open to hacking and, and being incorrect that I want to suggest that perhaps the council consider, uh, doing elections with a paper and pen in the future and abandoning the election machines. I wouldn't trust, um, our nation's nuclear arsenal to these machines, so I'm just feeling like we probably shouldn't trust our elections to it either because it's just, it's just too important that, as Americans, we can trust our elections. I just want to close with one, one comment here in my last minute, and this is from Ronald Reagan. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. And, uh...
Thank you, sir.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Mark Newman.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, but I wasn't, my ID wasn't checked, so how can you know for sure, right? How do you know that I'm me? I just want to say thanks to you guys for showing up today. It's really nice to see a full board, and I wanted to explain a little bit of something before I go on to my blurb. I'm wearing my brother's T-shirt. He had a band called Angry Inch Mob. He was the least angry person I've ever seen in my life, but he was a great musician. He wanted to be famous, and I'm going, I learned at a pretty early age that fame is not that secure. All I want to do is, I want to be heard. So what I'm gonna do is say, Dear Texas, thank you for, you know, mandating that we post a sign that says, "In God We Trust," but which God? There's so many to choose from. Now, I happened to find out that I'm a Romans 8:28er, which means that all things work out for my good, whether I make a mistake or not, they work out for my good. But what about the, my gods, you know? I will trust in my god, but I'm gonna make up my own rules as I go along. Is, is that a good idea? It's really not. How many mistakes have I made? How many mistakes are gonna be held against me? None. But how many of my mistakes could possibly affect others? Oh, a lot. So what I'm gonna do is I'm letting somebody here know that they've actually inspired a song. I found out that maybe I can play a couple songs while I'm here. So one of the people that are in the audience now, I, I'm gonna borrow a song from Frank Sinatra, and I'm gonna change it to, "She's got you under her thumb. She's got you on the puppet strings." I'll work on it, though, to make sure that it, you know, kind of makes sense and stuff. But the problem is, is that people do not pay attention to what's going on around them. They have this worldly philosophy that everybody's on everybody's side, and we're all good, and we've got some good in us, and everything's gonna work out great. Guess what? If you are a politician, if you become a politician, you have to pay attention to what's going on around you. You can't call a dissension between two board members a catfight. It's not fair when it's a dogfight, and this dog is not gonna give up trying. Also, I will say that I'm grateful that I have, I was given a suggestion this morning, next time I come in, to play the song that I want played here, which is dedicated to, guess what? An HOA. It's dedicated to an HOA. I don't want to leave, but if I'm forced to leave, what other option do I have? If I know I'm in the right, and those that are accusing me are in the wrong, do you know how much money it costs to prove that you're right? Do you know that even if you've got a good attorney and they can prove it, you're out this money? Well, guess what? I saved over the years. By the way, when you guys start working, 401K match, okay? Take advantage of everything your employer has. Social Security is fine. 6.2%, 6.5%, 1.55%. It goes towards your future, so just say, "Thank you, thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Mark Newman, followed by Thomas Daley.
Welcome, Mr. Newman.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Charles Mark Newman. How is everybody today? So today, you're going to see me on the agenda under 8F1 for the Senior Services Advisory Board. I also sit on our HOA Board, and I'm also on the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board, and I'm also running for a seat on the Sun Valley GID. So I hope I can get all your support in for the senior services. I'd appreciate it. My next thing is, is I was asked this question by numerous Sun Valley residents, which I'm on the cab, so they got my number. When we set up for like, this coming up for the 2040 Master Plan, or previous master plans that we've set up, Sun Valley set up master plans. Before a developer comes in, he has to have community meetings with everybody, and the community agrees, and they fight everything out, and then we go to the cab, and then we go to the GID, and everything's, Washoe County Planning Commission all approve this, and then the developer changes his mind, comes up in front of you, and changes the whole thing to completely different what it started with, and you guys all go, "We'll go for it." And I was just wondering why that happens. When you go through all those different protocols, and all of a sudden it can come up in front of you guys, and it just goes out the window. Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Thomas Daley, followed by Keith Lockard.
Welcome, Mr. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Thomas Daley from the Estates of Mount Rose. I would ask that my comments be entered into the record for today's meeting. On October 21, 2021, you approved an interlocal agreement between the Washoe County Sheriff's Office and the City of Reno for forensic services, a fee-for-services agreement retroactive to July 1 of '21, expiring this past June 30th. Quoting from the terms of that agreement, "The cost to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to provide the requested crime lab services to Reno is $1,615,516. The City of Reno agrees to pay $1 million for those services." At the meeting where you considered this agreement, the Washoe County Sheriff provided a staff report but no staff presentation, and this was on the consent agenda, so there was no discussion among the commissioners. So the question is, who is picking up the $615,000 difference, assuming the numbers in the agreement are accurate? I have made three public records requests to the Washoe County Sheriff to get an accounting. Two simple questions. How much did you spend, and how much did Reno pay you? To date, I have not received that accounting. That is a violation of the Public Records Act. I have asked the county manager to inquire, see if he could get an answer. He said he would. To date, no response. This agreement has not been subject to an audit by the county auditor. As this agreement has expired, it has not been presented to you to be renewed, although I'm guessing it's continuing without your authority. The Washoe County Sheriff has made no report to you in the intervening 12 months, 10, excuse me, 10 months. Given Reno's gross abuse of the previous forensic agreement, which you finally canceled in 2020, an audit is needed. As the sheriff has not presented a renewal, perhaps his appearance before you and the public to explain might be in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daley.
Keith Lockard, followed by Kenji Otto.
Welcome, Mr. Lockard.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Keith Lockard, 925 Peace Pipe Loop. I had a very productive meeting last week with Fire Chief Charles Moore, and that was timely because we were talking about the wildfire threats to the community, and we had just seen that Joy Lake Road fire a few days prior. And we talked about fire services, including the closure of the Station 30 near Bowers Mansion relative to health and safety issues. Now, I know that, sitting today, you're not the Board of Fire Commissioners, but by speaking today, I may raise issues appropriate for your meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. And I'm aware that other Washoe County residents have expressed concerns regarding that emergency services with the closure of Station 30, and I share those concerns. But today, today, my focus is on the planning and the design of the new fire station that will be constructed on the White Pelican Way Business Route 395 site. I strongly recommend and advocate for the inclusion of a properly sized meeting room and related restrooms in the building development program, design, and then the subsequent construction. Such a meeting room will serve a variety of government-community needs for which there's a high demand. A few years ago, saw a new station built at Thomas Creek and Arrow Creek Parkway, and then learned it did not have a public meeting room. Government uses are obvious: voting, staff training, emergency incident management and shelter, health services outreach, and new development proposal community meetings. Those are required, yet in talking with my friends in the development community, often they cannot find locations to have those meetings. And within the community, there are hundreds of special interest community groups that they all need affordable spaces to meet. My wife's a member of the DAR in Colonial Dame 17th Century. The local chapters have difficulty finding a meeting room that's affordable. And I'm on the board of my Southwest Fisters HOA. We have difficulty finding, uh, a meeting room availability at the North Valley's library, and the library is 10 miles away from Washoe Valley. So, in closing, such a meeting room really, uh, at the fire station is important in building relationships between the residents of Washoe Valley and with you and the county government. And I think that relationship building between the citizens and between the government, I think that should always be an overriding concern in governance. Copy of my presentation is with the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kenji Otto.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Kenji Otto. Commissioners, I want to recognize and thank Commissioner Jeanne Herman for projects that I have worked with her on that benefit Cold Springs Valley. In 2018, while I was on the North Valley cab, Commissioner Herman and I began a project to purchase and install a ADA electric door to the Cold Springs Valley Community Center. Due to COVID, a project, the, the project was delayed but not forgotten, and the effort moved forward. Commissioner Herman secured the funds for the door, which turned out to be two doors, and in January of this year, the project was completed, providing the elderly and physically impaired convenience of access to the center. Today, you will be approving a donation toward Commissioner Herman's neighborhood project to quiet and save lives on Crystal Canyon Boulevard. This project apparently is to begin construction next week on August 29th. I would like to correct a part of Mr. Fink's report. The benefit is to those who live along the northern part of the Boulevard outside of Woodland Village. I will be back to report on the whole project after construction is completed. Commissioner Herman has quietly taken on many projects that have benefited District 5. Some have taken her to Washington DC, dealing with Nevada land issues, and lists of additional accomplishments are on her website, voteherman.com. Commissioner Herman, as a single vote, has voted against projects that would and have impacted the voters of the North Valley, while our Marxist Democrat Commissioners voted with developers, going against their own outrage of saving the planet philosophy. I call on all believers of the God of Abraham to vote against the atheist Marxist Edwin Lingar, whose plans are to pave over the North Valley, and with developers encouraging more homelessness and lawlessness by defending the sheriff, funding the Sheriff Department and dictate how you must live. On this, his website, he is a pragmatic progressive. They are the lawless, defund the police advocates. Contrary to what Marxist Democrats want people to believe, we do not live in a democracy. These United States of America are a constitutional republic. And with the last few seconds, I ask you to disapprove item 22. I may not be able to say and speak on the item. Washoe County does not need more laws to harass the voters. In addition, I believe the NRS excludes animal control as law enforcement. NRS defines a peace officer as officers of certain societies, but I have not found any NRS that defines an animal control officer or categories that, that categorizes them as law enforcement. Who is going to make these arrests that make this a misdemeanor? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I have nobody else signed in.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. I know Mr. Mitchell is here, but let's move, before we, before we do that, let's just go ahead and move into item number five, Mr. Manager, and then we'll come back and circle back to item number three.
Item, item five is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, Vice Chair Hill, I'll have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to go to the Lake Tahoe Summit last week, and I missed our board meeting. I know that y'all had a great meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that it was a wonderful opportunity to interact with other elected officials from around the lake, other counties, and the city of Carson, as well as our federal delegation. And I think that we have some really exciting plans in place. We had a great presentation by Julie Reagan about the future of tourism at Lake Tahoe and how we're going to be focusing on public transit, and I'm very excited for what we're, we're going to do to preserve the lake and also ensure that the, the lake is accessible to all, especially the kids who are sitting up here. So, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hill. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to also mention 7A1 and, and put a shout out and a thank you to the listeners for providing the funding for, for, for the Crystal Canyon. A week or two ago, Bobby Thompson from Gardnerville or Mendon, Mendon Air Races, and was here with another gentleman, I can't remember his name, and, um, and they were requesting that maybe we could find some funding for, um, for the air races. They were a little short on money, so I would like to figure something out in a big hurry because they're coming up real soon. So if Mr. Chair would like to talk to me about that, I would be happy to discuss it with him and with our county manager. Her name was Bobby Thompson, by the way, and, uh, that's probably pretty important if we're gonna have a successful and safe air race. So I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to let you know that I represented the board on Saturday at the Sun Valley First Presbyterian Church, which has had continuous president, presence in that valley for 70 years. So that in itself was pretty phenomenal, and there were awards given out. Pastor Joe Barstow is also a wonderful representative on our General Improvement District for Sun Valley. He's a trustee, and he has been at that church since 1973. But the church has been in continuous operation, I guess you say, for a church, for 70 years. So I was there to speak on all of your behalf and how much we really appreciate the nonprofit and charitable that hold communities together and hold the continuity. There's quite a few people out there, even though it was about, it was outside, 95 degrees out, and still, uh, quite a few people showed up. So it was beautiful, and it was remarkable, and I'm just so proud of that community. You know my, my dear love for them. So I, I thought that was a neat piece of history, and maybe anybody who wants to do a video short or something, they could tie that in with the Black Springs area as well because there is some history out there that oftentimes we forget. And a lot of times in communities like this, it's often two or three families that really keep the continuity and, most importantly, their representation of what the needs are for the community. So I was very pleased to be there, and it was beautiful event. We had a live singers and a saxophone player from the Bay Area that showed up, so it was really cool. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, I have just a couple of things. I'm gonna start with these three young men who are beside me. They came to my door selling chocolate bars for their team. It was probably 100 degrees outside, maybe more. They could have been doing anything other than this, but they were out soliciting, oh, no, it's okay, donations for their team. I am proud to support this kind of effort. They could have been playing video games, they could have been out riding side-by-sides or motorcycles, they could have been doing anything else, and yet they were venturing around the neighborhood and working as a group to try to fund their team. I'm extremely proud of this kind of effort because youth sports builds that team spirit, that team continuity. It builds leadership, and it helps them function as a group, even when they disagree. And so I'm proud, we're gonna be support, I hope, I should say, I hope that my commission will support this donation that's coming up. And then we're gonna take just a short break when we do that, and we're gonna, and I'd like it to take these young men down, and I'd like to take the, the coaches and the team manager down and have a picture with them, because I think it's important to acknowledge this kind of effort in the community. And there's, and look, and there's lots of them out there, and they're all really, really good organizations. But what inspired me to help this group was the, the particular day. Who sells chocolate bars in 100-degree weather? I mean, you gotta be pretty committed to selling chocolate bars in 100 degrees. So, uh, that's, that's why I'm, I'm thrilled to support this effort. Let me go through a couple of other things. Let me thank staff, our engineering staff, and NDOT, and RTC for energizing the light at Sunset Springs and Egyptian. It is on. I have not, I've not heard any real issues with it. I've, I've seen some posts on Nextdoor, and everybody seems to be thrilled with that. Remember, we will be having, for those of you who live in Spanish Springs, City of Sparks will be putting in a delighted, a delight, a light at Dolores soon, which will help tremendously. I know it's gonna slow traffic down on the Pyramid Highway, but it's, it's gonna be much safer to get people in and out of that, that area. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention to you. The manager and I attended a couple of events, and, and I'm so proud of our manager. I'm proud... I'm proud of the, of how he has interjected himself into our community. You don't realize the hard work that this man does until you see him out at an event and you see him, and I'm going to just call it what it is, working the crowd. And he's absolutely amazing. We were at a children's cabinet event, and it was highly successful. He got in trouble with his wife because of, he spent his donation money for the, maybe even the year. So, and I'll just leave it at that. And then, we were at a Community Health Alliance event also. And again, I will just tell you, you have no idea until you see him work the crowd and you see how the crowd responds to him. Mr. Manager, I am so pleased with you and how you have interacted with our community, and I just wanted to say thank you during my time. Commissioners, did I shake anything else?
Mr. Chairman, you did, and I want to put that on the record too, before I never have a chance again. I will tell you, from serving for 15 years, I have never seen a manager show up at citizen advisory boards, at different citizen events, and I'm going to tell you something right now, for my constituents, it as if a rock star showed up. They love seeing the manager out there because they understand he could be anywhere else. He works 24/7, and here on, and remember, my cabs are not the most convenient for an eight-to-five type of person, which I've never been. He comes on a Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, and he stays for the entire meeting. I have yet, in my 15 years, ever have a manager do that. So, it's a novelty for me, but for my constituents, I cannot tell you how much they get ahold of me afterwards and are so impressed with our manager and that he is spending time with them. And I can't think of a better thing to do. If you are coming into a community new, you are not familiar with the ins and the outs and the who's and the what's and the last names and all the things that I've gleaned in 24 years of being here, is it 23? It's the most brilliant behavior because he also gets to hear what's going on at the ground level and not filtered through staff. Now, how long he'll do that, who knows? I wouldn't do it all that time, but I am so pleasantly surprised that this manager shows up at my constituent events, and they are more excited to see him than they are to see anybody else that walks in, the fire, the sheriff, anything else. So, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and that needs to be placed on the record. It needs to be considered as well in his 360-degree review and inform how we are going to equalize him in this region for his salary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. And I don't think it's going to end anytime soon, Commissioner Jung. I think that's just who he is. He is, that's, he loves doing that, he loves meeting people, and he's an interactive manager. So, Mr. Manager, I just wanted to say thank you for, and I witnessed it firsthand, and I've seen it before, but I just thought it was very important to mention. Last thing, code enforcement, Mr. Solero, if you're listening, please follow up with Mr. Snow and with staff, and we have, I know the manager has a copy of Mr. Snow's issues. Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Manager, can you make sure that Mr. Rodriguez follows up with, I'm going to, I'm just going to hack your name, so I'm just going to say Dr. Kurt. Please, please follow up with, and I want to say, is it Schlegel Milch?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I wrote it down, but I didn't know whether I had it correct. So, I, so please have staff follow up with him, make sure that we get his contact information so that staff can follow up. And then, Mr. Manager, can we follow up with Mr. Daley as well, or have staff follow up? And I can certainly do that with the Sheriff's Office. I have a call-in to the sheriff right now, and we can, we can have that conversation. Okay. Commissioners, I see no one else signed in, I see nobody's hand raised. Mr. Manager, would you take us back to item number three?
Yes. Item three is an appearance and presentation by Brian Mitchell, Director of the Nevada Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology on the construction and installation of fiber optics cable to support high-speed internet access to the Gerlach area. And, Mr. Chair, if I could go a step further, in my two-and-a-half-years-plus as county manager, I have never seen a state resource step forward to me as county manager to offer resources to help expand services in our county. And Mr. Mitchell has done that. As stated here, he helped us figure out a way to make the Gerlach fiber build pencil out, but he didn't just stop there. We are now working with his office to explore how we can use federal monies and state monies to expand broadband access into other rural areas of Washoe County. I was just in Rancho Haven on Saturday, speaking to the Homeowners Association, which is one of the many areas of the county where we have profound broadband challenges. So, I just want to point out, this gentleman has gone above and beyond to work with myself and my team to expand broadband access.
Mr. Mitchell, from, do you guys go, do you have the acronym OSIT? It should be on. It should be on. Try it.
Apparently, I know a lot about technology. Yes, Brian Mitchell, the Director of the Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology, and it is a lot easier just to say OSIT, or the State Broadband Office. It's a pleasure to be with all of you today. I'm very excited to be here, and thank you for having me on your agenda. I hope all of you are at least almost as excited about bringing faster, more reliable internet service to your constituents as I am. This is truly an exciting time to be working in the broadband space, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update to you all today on the state plan for bringing affordable, reliable, and scalable internet service throughout Washoe County and throughout the state. Before I kind of get into the meat of my presentation, I want to talk a little bit about Gerlach. And Gerlach has been on our list of projects, and OSIT was created seven years ago. And I'm just so pleased that we're finally, we've finally gotten to the point where we're able to bring internet service to the library in Gerlach, and then from there, leverage those resources to then provide better internet service to the school and to the rest of that community. Especially, I believe, Burning Man's happening pretty soon, and I know that the folks there are interested in partnering with us to also provide better connectivity for public safety and other emergency management-type resources to the, to the many folks who travel up that way. I also want to take a moment and perhaps pile on a little bit on Manager Brown. The Gerlach project would not have been possible, just in speaking about, you know, community outreach, the Gerlach project wouldn't have been possible without his efforts to establish strong relationships with the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, who was absolutely essential to getting this project done. They've been a great partner to the state and also to the county on this project, and I'm hopeful that this will also have many other benefits for the community as closer working relationships move forward. Wanted to talk a little bit about the state, start off by talking a little bit about the state's vision for broadband. As I mentioned, our goal is universal access to broadband. So, that means every Nevadan that wants access to the internet should have access that is affordable, reliable, and scalable. When we talk about fast internet, it's not enough if you have fiber to your doorstep if you, if you can't afford it. And so, if, you're just as unconnected as you would be, you know, living up in the very northern part of the county, up by the Wildlife Refuge, if you can't afford your internet connection. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about affordability later in the presentation. We also want that internet service to be reliable. Nobody likes the buffering or the little circle of death that you get when you're trying to do some, do a Zoom meeting or watch something online. And so, the infrastructure that we, that we build, we want it to be reliable and also scalable, that it not only meets our needs today, but it's going to meet our needs long into the future. Collaboration and partnerships, especially with local governments, is so important to our efforts. At the state level, we don't know your community as well as you do, and we rely heavily on you and particularly your staff to help us make sure that we're making the right investments throughout the county. We also know we're going to have to be very efficient with the use of funds. Nevada, while we're receiving a generational amount of money for broadband, we know that there are many needs and that the needs are far flung throughout the state. And so, we'll have to be very efficient in our use of funds in order to make sure that we are able to connect every Nevadan. And then, finally, you know, we want to focus on making long-term investments, 30-year, 40-year investments in infrastructure. So, as much as I like having this conversation with you, I'd prefer not to be back in for, you know, five or seven years, because what we did wasn't sufficient to meet the needs of the community, both for economic development as well as, you know, just hopping online to watch some cat videos on YouTube. So, I'd like to kick off the conversation then by talking a little bit about digital equity. Digital equity is a kind of an umbrella term that is, represents perhaps what we could call a three-legged stool. So, the first is, can you afford the internet at your home? The second is, do you have an internet-connected device? And then, third, do you have the digital literacy or the know-how to be able to use a computer effectively to live your best life? Each one of those is important, and we want to make all of the investments, both on the infrastructure side as well as on the digital equity side with those three topics in mind. Luckily for us, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration and the Department of Commerce has provided the state with some funding to be able to first plan out and then execute on a plan for digital equity. And there's a lot on this slide, and I provided it mostly so you can go back and look at it later. But what I want to focus on is, is there's a, there's three different buckets of money in the Digital Equity Act that can help your constituents to be able to, be able to use the internet in order to have a better life. So, right now, we're in Phase One, which is a planning process. We've submitted an application to receive planning money, our share of the $60 million for planning. And this is, this is extremely important because we want to work with you in order to develop a statewide plan for digital equity. So, that involves learning what are the needs in your community and how we can best go about meeting those needs. Once we have created a state plan, then the second, then that will unlock Nevada's share of the state capacity grant program dollars. There's $1.44 billion available to the 50 states, and so, we'll get a share of those dollars that we can begin to implement plans. For example, if we identify that there are senior citizens in your community who need help learning how to navigate, how to turn on a computer and log on to the Wi-Fi, we can work with you to fund perhaps a program at the senior center or the library that can teach seniors how to do those things. Likewise, if there's members of the community who are recent immigrants or English language learners who need help learning some basic word processing skills so that they can have a, so that they can find better employment, you know, we can work with the library to put together programming in that regard. So, there will be, I know a lot of times, planning isn't fun, and a lot of times, plans sit on shelves, but this is one plan where we'll have some money that we can use to deploy directly to implement the things or the, to solve the needs that we identify in the planning process. The final thing I'll just mention very briefly here is that there's a competitive portion that the state itself is not eligible for, but local nonprofits and entities here in the county would be eligible to apply, to apply directly to the federal government for some digital equity implementation dollars. And we're happy to provide support to anyone who's interested in applying for those dollars. You can see kind of the timeline that this is, this is not a tomorrow-type thing, you know, but we're looking probably sometime into next year before we, before some of these dollars begin to be operationalized. So, this, I think I've already talked about most of the things on this side, slide. We'll get about $750,000 in planning money, and that planning process will happen over the next six to nine months. And then, from there, we want to invest the dollars that we get in local capacity, local programs. We don't want to be creating any new state programs, because you know your, you know your community, and you already have relationships with the people who are most in need. I'd like to pivot a little bit and talk about the Affordable Connectivity Program. So, when we talk about affordability, a lot of times, one of the biggest barriers is that people kind of afford the internet. And so, the Affordable Connectivity Program is a federal program run by the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, and the program provides a $30 a month subsidy for anyone who qualifies for the program. If you're under 200% of the federal poverty level, you qualify, or if you're on SNAP, Medicaid, TANF, if you're on the school lunch program, if someone in your household has a Pell Grant, you would qualify for this program. Washoe County is not doing too bad in terms of its participation rate. You're about, you're at about 35% of those who are eligible who have signed up for the program. On this next slide, we have a, the map statewide broken down by zip code, and here, I've zoomed in a little bit to let you know by zip code how we're doing in Washoe County in terms of signing people up who are eligible for the program. It's a little bit kind of hard to tell where things are, so I've tried to point out where the lake is and then also where Peavine Peak is, so you can kind of orient yourself on the map. But there, so there are a couple of zip codes that are doing pretty well, and then there's some other zip codes in the area that perhaps aren't doing so well. And so, the bottom line is, is we're interested in partnering with you all to raise awareness about the Affordable Connectivity Program. We have some information, some resources, some flyers that we can help provide different community organizations that provide services to those populations, and we would welcome the opportunity to help raise awareness about the importance of this program. From the state perspective, the state is texting Medicaid recipients, they've put the message on their hold machines, they've put information on kiosks and kind of the foriors of some of the state office buildings, and so, the, so I think there's a lot of different ways that we can work together to try to raise awareness. Now, I'm going to shift the conversation from digital equity to infrastructure. In Phase One of our High-Speed Nevada Initiative, the state is going to build infrastructure to different state and local facilities throughout the state. These facilities are located in every community of the state and every county, well, almost every community, and in every county of the state. And I'll zoom in here and show you some of the facilities in Washoe County. You'll notice that there's Gerlach up at the top, but I'll zoom in to where some of these facilities are in and around Washoe County. These are facilities that today lack fiber and are at the beginning of our process to bring more fiber to communities. One of the things that we've done is we've opened up the opportunity for local governments to join an RFP process that the state is running to serve these facilities. So, as a state, we're not going to award 200, or we're not going to put out 250 different RFPs. Rather, we're going to cluster these, these facilities together into logical clusters and then bid out the opportunity for a provider or a partnership of providers to serve the facilities within a cluster. And that way, we hope that there won't be any orphans for, you know, some of the facilities that are way out in the middle of nowhere that might be more expensive to serve, but then that'll also lead to better pricing for the, for the different facilities. So, we've been working with Manager Brown and your staff to identify any local government facilities that are in need of better connectivity that you can add to your, to our RFP, and those are represented here by the gray dots that you see on the, on this map. These are facilities that the county has identified that are in need of better connectivity, and so, we're working to add those to the map. The county would then only be responsible for the incremental cost of building to your facility rather than the sharing in the entire cost of the program, and then obviously, whatever the monthly recurring cost is for the internet service. So, it's a way to save the local government some money and, or connect to these facilities in a cheaper way, while also strengthening the entire RFP so that there's better, there's more, you know, there's more end units or end facilities that are going to be connected. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about Phase Two of the High-Speed Nevada Initiative, and this is when we'll start to talk a little bit about connecting individual residences that are, that are in need of connectivity. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is also known as the bipartisan infrastructure law, there's a, there's law, there's a, there's $42.5 billion for states in what's called the BEED Fund. BEED stands for the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Fund. And so this is our fund to be able, once we've built some fiber to the, to the different state facilities, we'll be able to then branch off of that and start to connect local unserved households, unserved businesses that are in the state. So let's take a look at what that process is going to look like. Again, this is, this is a pretty long timeline, so I just want to be clear that, you know, we, we aren't tearing up the streets tomorrow and putting fiber into, you know, those unserved neighborhoods tomorrow. Rather, the state is going to develop a five-year plan and submit that along with an initial proposal to the NTIA. And then we'll get started sometime next year, hopefully with, with making specific awards. The, the state's role in this is, is we, we serve, we want to serve as a, as a way to engage communities, to provide resources and tools, capacity, technical assistance. And then we define a grant plan and we'll seek out approval for the applications that come in. So from a local government perspective, we're relying on local governments and local broadband action teams that Manager Branch, Brown chairs here in Washoe County to help us identify the needs in the community and to prioritize those needs so that we don't leave any household behind. Once you all have prioritized your needs and you've come up with a list of needs in the county, then the next step would be for the, for the county to identify through an open, fair, and competitive process, a private, a private provider partner to meet those needs. So we won't be awarding any funding directly to private internet service providers, but rather we want to award funding to a local government, private provider partnership. And that way, local government is, is driving the, the train, so to speak, in terms of identifying what the needs are in the community and what funding will be applied for to meet those needs, whereas the provider would then provide all the technical specifications for how those needs would be met. So then, once the county has identified its partner, then the, the, the partner and the county would work together to apply for funding from the state to meet those needs. Again-
Mr. Mitchell, how much, how much longer? We typically do, we typically do about a 10-minute presentation.
Yep, I've got about-
You're convincing these young men not to go into politics.
[laughing]. I've got about two minutes left, is that okay?
All right, thank you.
So just wanted to show you what some of the unserved areas look like in the county. The blue and the green areas are, we're considering served, whereas the red and orange areas, we are considering presumptively unserved. Having said that, I think we want to work with you to really do an analysis of the, the data that we have and to see if we can ensure that these areas are, you know, to validate whether or not the areas are truly served or unserved. The, the final slide I have is, is just a summary of some areas of collaboration. We'd love to work, continue to work with you and your staff, both on the digital equity side as well as the infrastructure side. And I appreciate you allowing me to go a few minutes over in my presentation today. And here's my contact info if anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Manager, would you like to make any comments?
Only that, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for sharing the presentation. We do have the maps with overlays for county facilities and our own communities and for any of the commissioners that would like to sit down and have a discussion about your districts and where you're hearing there are needs. I think I'm pretty well-versed on District Five, but happy to talk about any others. This is a very important project that will help expand broadband access and broadband affordability throughout the program in the future. I would also just like to wrap up by saying you've allowed your staff to build a outreach team in terms of the cabs and we envision using that same team of individuals to help us with this digital equity piece so we can determine where, for instance, there might be elderly communities or communities that need help, not only with broadband affordability, but with developing the, the digital literacy in terms of how to use it and the edge devices required. So, thank you, Brian.
Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, and we're really excited about the partnership with Gerlach. It's going to be transformative for that area. The map you showed, it showed that Lake Tahoe is well-served, and that is not the case at all, actually. It's really, it, it's an area that gets overburdened, actually, because of the tourism that comes in there, and that's a problem if there's an emergency or people are trying to get public transit on their phones or all those other services. So the Tahoe Prosperity Center, I know, is going to be looking at those competitive grants because it is such an interesting situation of being both in California and the state of Nevada. But is there, can I connect the Tahoe Prosperity Center with you as they move forward with those projects?
Thank you, Commissioner Hill and Brian Mitchell for the record. And actually, we, we meet monthly with the Tahoe Prosperity Center-
Oh, great.
And are, and are pretty well-versed with some of the, the unique challenges that the lake has. And I think, you know, what you see up there is, is a, is a little bit more nuanced than perhaps what the map provides. And, and so certainly we're working hard on, on some different solutions to the specific challenges up at the lake.
Great, great. And I would just say on that Affordable Connectivity Program, which I had no idea existed, we should connect with the Health District because they are reaching out to those same zip codes for other outreach and health goals that we have in Washoe County. So I think there may be a great partnership. I don't know if Commissioner Lucy, if that's something that we could look at, but-
Absolutely.
What an incredible, $30 a month, that's a huge amount of money for folks to connect to internet. We want to make sure, I mean, did that exist during the pandemic or this is post-pandemic, I'm assuming?
This is post-pandemic. Brian Mitchell, for the record, and, and it, it is, it existed probably partway through the pandemic-
Okay.
And then they've, Congress has made it into a, into a permanent program. And so the, the great thing is, is that if you are a, if you're someone who's a member of a tribe, then you get $75 a month. And members, other members get $30, $30 a month. And there are, there is one provider here in the area who offers a low-cost plan at $30 a month. So anyone who qualifies for the Affordable Connectivity Program can get internet at no added cost.
That's amazing. Okay. One more thing, Mr. Chairman, to the manager, I'm wondering if, I didn't see Verdi on our map as a potential area, and I know we have some, we, we have that library out there, so I don't know if there is broadband connectivity out there or fiber, but maybe it's something to add to the maps when we can discuss-
There is at the library, but, and, but we'll look at Verdi and, and that whole area of the county. The other thing I, I might go back to on the, on the lake is my experience has been the lake had, there's a difference between broadband and cellular coverage.
Okay.
So the lake is pretty well-covered for broadband residentially. It does have some profound cell gaps that people will complain about. We have other areas of the county where that's the case, too. But yeah, there are things we can do, I think, Commissioner, to make sure that we're focused on addressing those issues.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Lucy, have you signed in?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian, thank you for coming today, I do appreciate it. This is one of been, one of, one of the more important things that, you know, I've enjoyed working on over my career here at the commission. And I think that it's important, one of the things that we realized through the pandemic is not just that through the Health District, but for the children, for education. This is so paramount in, in every area, whether kids have direct access or not to the internet because, and I think what we should be doing, not only working with the Health District to roll this out, but with the School District. Now, have you, through the schools, state school superintendent or, you know, local school, school boards, have you been working with them to identify, you know, children or families of need that might, you know, look at this? I mean, have we, what are you guys doing to do that, to address those?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Lucy, Brian Mitchell for the record. And we've, we've had some outreach with the district. I'm working directly with Chris Turner, who is the CIO for the district, to both identify kids who, who have, who have needs for technology and, and/or hotspots or whatnot in their home. And then we're working to distribute information through kind of the new school process. We've provided the information to the district on the Affordable Connectivity Program that can go home to kids through the, you know, through all of the other stuff that gets sent home, you know, in their backpacks. And so we're, we're exploring a couple of different ways to try to get the word out through the, through the School District, and they've been a good partner.
Yeah, because it's, you know, I understand that individuals can sign up to, you know, get the, the rebate, the $30 or, or the money towards it. But if kids can't relay that to their parents or their parents are working or don't have the ability to sign that up, that, that becomes the issue. And I understand this should be free information to everybody and everybody should have access to the internet to utilize, whether they're paying bills or just, you know, signing up for things or getting access. But children need this to do homework, they need this to access reports and participate in school programming. And, and so it's so paramount for children, but when you're trying to give information to children to get it to their family members to have them follow through, there has to be something, some kind of a program or setting that can just allow for these, this, this ability for people to read, you know, outreach. If we're sending it to families, talking to families, you know, there's got to be something more because one of the, we have, we talked about, you know, families that would have to drive to local libraries during the pandemic that were closed and sit in the parking lot for kids to do Zoom learning, and, and that's not okay. You know, you want these kids to participate at, in their home environment, and if they don't have that, that's a problem. So I mean, better outreach through the pandemic was one of the biggest things that we saw, so hopefully that, that continues to grow. So thank you, Mr. Mitchell, I do appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna, I don't see anyone else signed in, I'm gonna close this off by saying, you know, most of us who have rural areas, I think Commissioner Jung, you're the only one who doesn't really have a rural area, but there may be some issues in, in District Three of connectivity.
Just at my house, I can't get any cell service. I think that's part of the issue. Is that right, Phil?
Stop wrapping your cellphone in tin foil and it will work a lot better, Commissioner, I promise you. But in every, in every district, I know, I know there's connectivity issues in, in all the rural areas, and so I, I think that this opens up a, a broader conversation. Well, my hope is, and this is my genuine hope, is that you guys don't study this to death, just get out and do it. I mean, that's, that's the problem. You know, it takes, you know, you, you talk about, you know, three, four, five-year conceptual timelines and, and it needs to happen now. And so, Mr. Manager, I don't know, I, I understand the, the need for fiber, but is fiber, is fiber really going to be the wave of the future or will it all be wireless? I mean, you know, it's like alarm systems on house, houses, they don't put, they don't use wires anymore, everything is wireless now. So my hope is, is that we don't invest a ton of money into things and then ultimately, within five or 10 years, suddenly we realize that we spent literally billions of dollars in, in hardwiring all this stuff when that becomes obsolete. But Mr. Manager, I look forward to you following up with us and, and giving us some timelines. And Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'm going to move some things around, we're going to do item number eight. We have tortured these young men long enough. So let's, Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number eight?
Item eight, A1, is the approval of minutes for the Board of County Commissioners' regular meetings. Well, that, that's the consent agenda, you want-
That's the consent agenda. Mm-hmm. That's just, that's item number eight, it's just our, our consent. Okay? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on consent agenda?
We do, we have, let's see here. Elise Weatherly on eight F1.
Ms. Weatherly.
And eight F2 as well.
Elise Weatherly, okay, I was not exactly prepared for the eight items, so I probably won't spew as much as I would, but what I will say about eight F1, Charles Mark Newman, I would say no. What I will say is where's my help been? Okay, I've gone to the service center, I've gone to the Washoe County for child support help, I have asked for help in every way. So what I'm going to say is that anyone can have words, but where's the action behind it? I'm not seeing any action, but I think I know you guys are going to just go ahead and vote yes because you seem to do that, which makes me want to pack up and move, all right? Also, the child death review. What about kids that are born by parents, by daughters, let's just say hypothetically, that took drugs and it affected that child for, it will affect him for his entire life? Where's my help? Called the medical community, oh, well, you know, alcohol is the big thing here. Really? Should we take a look at drugs and what that can do to children? And can we maybe help people that are paying for those children themselves without any help from anybody? By the way, my mom used to live in Gerlach. And do I get any help from her? Gosh, no. So all I'm saying, you guys, is please, please just don't say yes. What about mental health? I have been crushed by this community. Where's my help, right? What about eight, seven, four? Child support, family services, gosh, where's my support? Reunification of families? Gosh, I actually tried it knowing it wasn't going to work. Where's my help been? So my help has been with people that say they're going to help, but they really don't. How about eight F6, child support services? Where's my help been? I'm doing this all on my own. By the way, I was scheduled to die in 2015. The medical community said you have four months to live. I heard a voice saying, "I'll sustain you." And here I am, telling the truth that nobody wants to hear. What about eight F7? Where, where's my help? Okay, what about adoption? I'd love to adopt a dog, but where's my help? I'm scraping by every month and then have a $1,000 fine thrown over my head by my homeowners association because I won't do what? I won't lie. All right, you guys, so where's the help for people that refuse to lie, that refuse to compromise, that don't have the issues that you say I need help for? I'm just this much over poverty, so out. Okay, I think that's enough, I'm going to go get the child his favorite food. By the way, Fiesta Mexicana has changed their Tuesday specials to what my grandson likes. I think it was because to honor me. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have, let's see, on item eight I1, Brittany Deal.
This is, this is the manager, manager of the team. Ms. Deal, welcome. Mr. Kenny, would you like to come down also? You guys still have three minutes.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners and community. My name is Brittany Deal, I'm the business manager for the Spanish Springs Pop Warner 14U team. This is our head coach, Jade Kenny. And you met the three wonderful gentlemen sitting up there, thanks to Chair Hartung. We are here to address action item eight I1. Our organization, Reno Sparks Pop Warner, has a mission to enable people, young people to benefit from the participation in team sports and activities in a safe and structured environment. More specifically, our team's goal is to provide both physical and mental learning opportunities to the 35 young men that are on our roster. It's important to me and the rest of the coaching staff that these young men learn to be part of their outcome, which includes putting in the work to fundraise for themselves, as they were when they knocked on your door, to team-build, eat healthy, be respectful and responsible and supportive of each other, all while learning the great sport of football. I have always said that a child should be involved in some type of activity that gives them responsibility for themselves, to others, and for others. In this day and age, I'm thrilled to see so much participation when they could be in front of a screen. These young men are a shining example of what good can come from this participation. They are hardworking, respectful, and understand the value of hard work and determination to get where they want to be. This team is truly special and they have big goals of competing at a higher level. This potential donation means so much to us as we want every player to be able to participate in all aspects of the season regardless of their ability to participate financially. I want to extend a sincere thank you to Chair Hartung for recognizing the value of our organization, organization, the team, and for acknowledging these three boys for their determination, respectful nature, and hard work. We invite you all to come see the results of their hard work at one of their games this season, which starts Labor Day weekend on Saturdays. We are so proud of our Spanish Springs community and intend to represent our county, city, and state well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, there's nobody else signed in on any day.
A close public comment, bring it back to the-
We are so proud of our Spanish Springs community and intend to represent our county, city, and state well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, there's nobody else signed in on any day.
Close public comment. Bring it back to the board. Vice Chair Hill, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent calendar, but I also would just like to point out, as the public commenter had mentioned, item eight I1, Commissioner Funds. Commissioner Hartung, our chairman, is donating $5,000 to Reno Sparks Pop Warner. And this organization enables young women to benefit from participation in team sports and activities in a safe and structured environment. And we have up here, and the folks that we have up here are Cooper, Bullock player, Dominic Graves player, Lucas Meadows player, Jake Kenny, head coach, and Brittany Deal, the team manager, and Elizabeth Bullock, who is a mother. So, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for what you do. And I think, so that, that is my motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung, but I have some folks signed in. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in, wishing to speak.
I, I live in a place where I don't get anybody coming and looking for donations. And I love helping. And so I have a little helper. So if you'd have come to my door, you'd have gotten that.
There's a, there's a cash donation coming off Coach and, and Manager off the dais. No, Commissioner Jung? Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I, I wanna, I think this is a phenomenal use of funding to continue to elevate our youth in our, in our community. To see these young players standing up here, and they have been very, very collected all morning long, sitting with us, and, and sitting through an interesting start to our day. But I also want to point out to the parents, I understand how, how challenging it is to participate in these, these types of events, because a lot of families can't afford these programs. And your $5,000 will go a long ways to helping a lot of families that may not be able to afford the jerseys, the socks, the, the equipment that these boys need. And I gotta tell you, I'm very impressed with these three 13-year-olds right now, and their ability to participate and do the type of fundraising. But realize that this is a lot of volunteer help, too. The parents, Mr. Kenny, Ms. Deal, the time and effort that you have committed to volunteering, to helping these boys, young, young individuals grow, men and women both, any participation is tremendous. So not only is this a donation to them, but a donation to you and, and your continued commitment to this community. So, gentlemen, thank you so much for coming today and participating. And Commissioner Hartung, thank you for seeing the greatness in, in a bunch of young men that can really add or change the way things are in our community. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. I appreciate it. So the final word under, under discussion. I will tell you, when these three young men came to my door, they were, they were very respectful. They didn't call me dude. They called me sir. And, and, you know, again, it really, it really caught my eye. And, and Commissioner Lucy, I'm glad you brought up the parents. I will tell you that virtually every single child whose parents were involved when my kids were, were involved in school, and my kids are, as all of you, well, most of you, you, you may not know, my kids are all empty nesters. They're probably the same age as many of you in the, in the audience. So we're going back 25 years. But those parents that were involved, those kids are successful today. And so, and it doesn't matter whether it's involved just in the schoolwork, or it's involved in these kinds of extracurricular activities, where, and, and sports is, again, it's a great team-building effort, and they, and they understand how to work collectively. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm very proud to support them. I'm proud of them. Thank you for sitting up here, gentlemen. What we're going to do is we're gonna take a vote, and then we're gonna move ourselves into recess real quickly, because I personally would like a photograph with them, and, and the coach, and the manager, and the other members that have showed up today. And then we'll come back. So I have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. We have asked for public comment and taken it. We have taken discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna be in recess for just about Okay, thank you so much. If everyone would have their seats, I'm going to bring us back to order. And thank you, everyone, for indulging us this morning. I genuinely appreciate it. Mr. Manager, let's go back to item number six, to our proclamation, if you would, please.
Item number six, our proclamation is May September 20.
Can you hear me? September 2022, as National Preparedness Month.
Vice Chair Hill, who all do we have? I know we have a whole group. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and, and.
Come on, I'm no bite. You can get a little closer to me.
Yep, move, move around on both sides. You guys don't have to, you can be on both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for letting me present this proclamation. I went to Emmitsburg with this crew, and I learned so much about emergency preparedness. We did a drill for an earthquake that then turned into a flood, and many other disasters rolled out of that. And I learned a lot about how incredible this team is. I'm so proud. It doesn't make me, why am I getting emotional? But I'm very proud of this Washoe County team, and being there with Reno and Sparks and all of our regional partners, and how well we work together. And even our, our professors, our teachers, were so impressed that how well-oiled our region is. And it's because of this group. This group brings together our region a lot to go over all these other scenarios. And so I hope our community realizes that we are very prepared for many different situations that can happen in our community. And, and so I will present this proclamation. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Washoe County to prepare their families, homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, from natural to man-made disasters. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, and our communities can reduce the fatalities and economic devastation in our community and our nation. And whereas the Washoe County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Program and other state local awareness in prepared, preparing for emergencies, and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Washoe County and its, and its citizens, our urge to make a preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared to disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas, all citizens of Washoe County are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities, and are asked to visit www.redywashoe.com to learn more about the three steps of preparedness. One, make a plan, including a communications plan. Two, assemble a kit with enough supplies for a minimum of three days. Three, stay informed about the type of emergencies and related emergency actions that could incur, occur in your local community. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners does proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month, dated this 23rd day of August 2022, signed by our chairman. And I'll let Kelly take the stage.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Kelly Etcheverria, for the record. Honored to be here. Thank you so much for recognizing September as Preparedness Month in Washoe County. Behind me are many of our community partners that emergency management plans, trains, exercises with through all aspects of emergency management, but specifically today, preparedness. We have City of Reno Fire and Emergency Management, our Washoe County team, CERT, the school district, the airport, the health district. None of what we do as a program, we could do without any one of these entities standing behind me, and many who weren't able to make it today as well. So I thank them all for their participation in helping our community become more prepared, and as a result, more resilient against our 13 identified hazards. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say anything? Okay.
I do have, I do have a gift for you all. In the first responder and secondary responder communities, often, challenge coins are used when people go above and beyond. And so our, our agency has acquired such coins, and we'd like to present them to each of you as a thank you for your support and guidance of our program and our community as a whole.
Well, thank you so much. You know what? You're not gonna get away this easily. We're gonna take a recess, and we're gonna do a, let's do a photograph. We missed, we're missing, oh, there he is. Okay, we could, we have Commissioner Lucy. So we're just gonna go into recess real quickly, and, and then we'll come back, and we'll take our We are back. Thank you so much. Commissioner Hill, Vice Chair Hill, was that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it was, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a motion for the proclamation, item number six, and I have a second. So I have a motion by Hill, second by Lucy. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, oh, close public comment. I will bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That now takes us to item number seven, donations. Mr. Manager, would you just briefly take us into donations? And then, Commissioner Jung, would you read the donations today?
Item seven is donations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Manager. I would like to direct the public's attention to seven Alpha One, which is a donation of $20,000 from Lifestyle Homes for CSD Engineering Division's Crystal Canyon Boulevard Traffic Calming Improvement Project to reduce the speed and improve pedestrian safety. Thank you so much to the listeners and their forever commitment to this community. Item seven Bravo One is to acknowledge various items in the amount of $607 from various donors to the Human Services Agency, Child Protective Services. That is an area of which we have found people to be the very most generous for child protective services, coming in second only to homeless animals. Going, moving on to seven Bravo Two is acknowledge various items for the homeless fund, $3,616. Various items in the amount of $10,405 items, seven Bravo Three to the Human Services and the Senior Services Fund specifically. Seven Charlie One is acceptance of two scholarships with a total estimated amount of $3,113.66 for the travel of two county employees to attend the American Probation and Rural Association's training. And it was awarded to the Juvenile Services Department by Nevada Center for Juvenile Justice Innovation. Great support and great. Great support and great belief in how very important it is from the Juvenile Justice Innovation Center to teach our people who are the professionals dealing with kids who get in some trouble, which I think every single one of us up here did, we just maybe didn't get caught. So I'm always happy when we're restoring liberty and justice for minors. I don't believe they should ever be prosecuted as adults, especially now that we have all the neuroscience info today. And guess what? Nobody's brain is fully formed till they're 25, human beings. So I hope our laws will start reflecting that, our sheriff and our DA as well, to reflect what the science has actually found. And that is in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, and great gratitude to all of the donors in this community that keep us going because we would never get it done without generosity of others. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Hill. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number seven?
I have Elise Weatherly signed in, but I believe she's left the chamber. So there is nobody else signed in.
Did I see Mr. Otto sign in earlier for item number seven?
I think he requested to not speak.
Okay, that's okay. Good. All right. I just didn't, I wasn't sure whether there was a glitch in our system. I have a motion and a second. We have asked and taken public comment. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That now takes us to potentially, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hill, would you entertain us with a block vote?
Absolutely. I would suggest that we block items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 21. And that is a form of a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Hill, second by Jung. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Manager, rather, would you read those items in? And then, Madam Clerk, we will call public comment on any of those items.
Item nine is the Community Services recommends to accept the Nevada Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Lemon Valley Flood and Stormwater Advance Assistance Design and Planning Project Grant in the amount of $450,000 with a county cash and kind match in the amount of $150,000 as outlined in the staff report. Item 10, the Comptroller recommends to approve the settlement of the claim by the heirs of Joel Edwards and the estate of Joel Edwards for a total sum of $459,371.01. For all claims against Washoe County, the vehicular accident causing the death of Joel Edwards is outlined in the staff report. Item 11, Comptroller recommends to retroactively approve the net settlement receipt of $1470,000 from Chubb Insurance for funds to be used for the necessary repairs in Washoe County 1970 Bell helicopter due to a hard landing that occurred on June 2nd, 2022, as outlined in the staff report. Item number 12, the Health District recommends to award request for proposal for the Washoe County Health District's healthcare-specific temporary grant positions, retroactive to July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, to talent framework in the total amount not to exceed $7,305,862.20, as outlined in the staff report. Item 13, Human Resources recommends to acknowledge and approve the selection of the contract award to provide medical and dental third-party administration services as part of the Health Benefits Program for the county's self-funded PPO, HDHP, and dental plans available to employees, retirees, and other eligible dependents effective January 1st, 2023, estimated increase of $299,089 for the calendar planned year 2023, as outlined in the staff report. Item 14 is a Human Services Agency recommends accept the FY23 Fund to assist former foster youth sub-grant award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child and Family Services in the amount of $200,000 with no county match, retroactive from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2023, to provide case management and related services to youth aging out of foster care, as outlined in the staff report. Item 15 is a Human Services Agency recommends to accept an FY23 John H. Chafee Foster Care Program Subgrant Award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child and Family Services in the amount of $247,715, $61,929 county match, retroactive from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, to support youth who are aging out of the foster care system in Washoe County with achieving greater independence as adults, as outlined in the staff report. Item 16 is the Human Services Agency recommends to accept an FY23 Subgrant Amendment for the Fund of Healthy Nevada Award with Nevada Clinical Services, Inc., through the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Public and Behavioral Health, in the amount of $231,274 with no county match, retroactive to March 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, to support meals at our place, food baskets for clients at crossroads, and meals for the second home-delivered meals program, as outlined in the staff report. Item 17 is a Human Services recommends to accept a greater, a grant agreement between Washoe County Human Services Agency and the William &amp; Pennington Foundation in the amount of $342,500, no county match, retroactively from June 28th, 2022 to June 27th, 2023, in support of child and foster care, as outlined in the staff report. Item 18 is the Human Services Agency recommends to accept an FY23 Title X Subgrant Award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $663,807, no county match, retroactive to July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, to promote reunification, safety, education support, and normalcy for children in care, as outlined in the staff report. Item 19 is the Human Services Agency recommends to accept a Temporary Assistance to Need, Needy Families Emergency Assistant Program Subaward from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Welfare and Supportive Services in the amount of $1587,817 with no county match for Washoe County Child Welfare Services, retroactive for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, as outlined in the staff report. Item 21 is the Regional Medical Examiner recommends to approve agreement between Washoe County and Nevada Donor Network for the use of Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office Facility for postmortem tissue donation for a period of three years, with revenues totaling $727,944 effective January 1st, 2023, as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So, Madam Clerk, public comment?
There is nobody signed in in any of these items.
Okay, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board. I'm going to ask a question here, Commissioners. Item number 13, Ms. Barrington and her staff are here to give us, and as you know, we have a short presentation, if you would like it. And I think that it would be nice, but before Ms. Barrington gives us a presentation, come on down, Ms. Barrington, please. I would just like to thank the Medical Examiner's Office for item number 21, and I'm hoping that we will support that. This is so important for so many people. It's just, I cannot begin to express my debt of gratitude for all the folks that work in organ and tissue donation. And so this is just, it's very, very important for our community. So I will just get off that. And Ms. Barrington, item number 13, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Ashley Barrington, for the record. Item 13 today has to do with our self-funded health plan and dental plan. We are transitioning away from our current TPA, our third-party administrator, and have gone through the RFP process and selected UMR as our most qualified vendor for, to provide those services. So today with me, I have some representatives of UMR. They are here and can provide a presentation if you need it. I can certainly answer any questions, or we can have the presentation.
Commissioners, what is your desire?
I don't need a presentation, Mr. Chairman, and I'm thrilled to support this item.
Okay, all right. Look at there. And I read through this, you and I had this conversation, actually, some time ago, or not some time ago, but within the last month, I want to say. I'm supportive of the direction that staff is going. It's a changing world, and so, all I will say is, Ms. Barrington, thank you for being so proactive. And I know, I feel like I get special treatment from Ms. Barrington, but I have had, I have had other people tell me exactly the same thing, and that are not Commissioners, how responsive you are, and just how you have your finger on the pulse of all of this stuff, pun intended.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we have a, we have a motion. Did I have a second? I had a second by Commissioner Jung, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Hill, second by Ms. Jung. We have asked for public comment. Is there any other discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Okay, thank you, Commissioners. That takes us now, I believe, Mr. Manager, to item number 20.
Yes, item 20 is discussion and direction to staff regarding up to two Washoe County bill draft requests for the 82nd 2023 session of the Nevada Legislature, which will begin on February 6th, 2023. Proposed bill draft requests include changes to NRS Chapter 111 to allow county recorders to take action proactively, to remove discriminatory covenants from recorded documents within their counties, and to NRS Chapter 484D to expressly add county snowplow vehicles to the list of emergency and service vehicles allowed to display blue lights while operating. And in chambers, we have Assistant County Manager Thomas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Before we do this, I just, I wanted to thank Vice Chair Hill. The snowplow issue was such a major deal. No, I'm kidding. The discriminatory language she's been a great champion of in her district, and I think you see that, especially in those older homes. And it's not that the snowplows weren't important to you as well. But I just, I want to thank you for really championing this. It's an important cause, and you've been at the forefront, you've been working. I know you worked on some various issues with specific property owners and with the recorder's office, but now we're going to put this into statute so that regardless, or we're going to ask to put it into statute, rather, so that regardless of where this occurs throughout the state, it definitely needs to be removed. And Ms. Thomas, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Manager Brown, for the record, Kate Thomas, I'm the Assistant County Manager. And before you have two items for consideration as your bill draft requests for Washoe County for the upcoming legislative session. I think the title pretty much covers what those two items are. We had a number of submissions. These were pretty viable for the county to look going forward. We also learned that Sparks is interested in the blue light issue as well, so we'll be looking to coordinate with them, and whether there's another legislator that's willing to carry that bill as well. So we'll be recommending that these two come forward as your placeholders. We'll certainly work with LCB staff and our, we have Alfredo Alonso, who is assisting the county with legislative issues in Carson City, to help answer any questions that you have on these two BDRs. So the floor is open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I gave a little bit of an opening statement, as again, to how proactive our vice chair has been. But talk to us about the blue light issue. Where, how did that become, why is that on our radar, Ms. Thomas?
So we were informed that frequently, and especially last year, we were servicing areas with snowplows in rural parts of the county, as we do, and we were getting pulled over for having these blue lights on county snowplow vehicles by NHP, who said we aren't authorized by state law to have the blue lights. And we had even one instance where they said they were going to cut the lights. So we felt that we needed to continue the use of those lights for public safety, for our drivers, and for the citizens on the roadways. And so we're adding that to statute as a course of business, so that we can continue that practice.
No, and I, and look, and those, if you've ever been in a snowstorm behind a snowplow, those blue lights will pierce that snowstorm. They, you can absolutely see them. And so I think that this is, and I understand NHP's angst with this, if it is in state law that way, and I'm assuming that it is, because here we are with the BDR to change that. But I, you know, snowplows are so important. I mean, they keep our roads open. I can't tell you how many times I've followed a snowplow out Pyramid Highway or in from Spanish Springs on the Pyramid Highway, because they're breaking trail. And so I'm highly supportive of this. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in first.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to, of course, the vice chairwoman, who I know is working tirelessly on, as many of us are, trying to find other people to carry bills too for us. That's usually the most effective. And I want to thank Ms. Thomas and Mr. Alonso, as well as Mr. Brown, in crafting up two bills to bring forward, because it has been the practice here for two long, 15 years, at least, of saying, we're not going to ask the state for anything, we're just going to lay low. And, you know, I don't believe in hiding in plain sight. I couldn't if I wanted to anyways, because I don't have a poker face for that. But I think that this is measured. It's kind of an experiment. Because, you know, here's another thing, while we are the luckiest county in all of Nevada, that Alfredo Alonso will take our pittance that we pay him to help us. But we also have a whole different legislature, too. It's, the churn there is so much different that we cannot have any sort of certainty that if we go easy on them, they're going to go easy on us the next two years, because they churn so much. So I think this is dipping the toe in the pond, addressing real issues that affect the entire county area. And, you know, as you've seen with these microcells, too, which the Fire and Weather Service have repeatedly told me for the last four years, microcells are the future for our weather patterns. So I think this is the smartest way that Ms. Thomas, Mr. Alonso, Ms. Hill, I don't know who all cooked this cake, baked this cake. You can tell I don't bake. I don't know how we baked this cake. But I hope that this commission and the experts that are watching this, let's see how that's accepted. Because there might be, you know, like, whoa, whoa, you guys have never said a chirp. And then you guys can say, whoa, whoa, this is not a whole lot of singing over here. So I'm going to keep my, if I pay attention to this still during the actual session, I do want to keep my mind and my eyes on it to see what happens with it. But I think they're achievable, they're measurable, and it also can solve a lot of issues that we as a county. So kudos to you, vice chairwoman. I'm sure Mr. Chairman had his hands in the baking. And of course, our Commissioner Lucy, the president of Nevada NACO, real smart voters in that district. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't retain the person who's in charge of the whole state for counties. So I'm very proud of how we've dipped our toe in here and how this has been constructed, especially, it's kind of a new legislative session if we can hold the COVID rates down, right? There might be a new culture coming out of that. And I'm so glad that we're dipping our toe in there. And I know it's scary, but good on you, Ms. Thomas. This is very, very measured. And I know Ms. Rodriguez probably had something to do with this, but there is a shift and a change, and I'm pleased to see it, actually. I think this is a new day for Washoe County. And let's see if we get smacked for it, or if they say, bring us more, and then we can work from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate it. And I do want to share the same sentiments that Commissioner Jung just shared. You know, this is, these are difficult. You know, obviously, September 1st always jumps up on us every year prior to legislative up on us every year prior to a legislative session. And it's a lot of work to put these BDRs in and get these drafted and, and kind of identify the needs of the county, being as robust as we are and what we need to address during the session. And it's through the leadership, through Manager Brown and Manager Thomas, Mr. Alonso, and even our, our previous now interim registrar voter, Jamie Rodriguez, to identify those real needs and how we can carry those bills and really navigating the legislative waters in Carson City through the session, being it is for very long, very arduous months that we spend on there, moving bills through and making sure that the legislators understand the importance of what we're trying to accomplish. And specifically as it pertains to the snowplows, this is not just a Washoe County issue or a district issue as it pertains to District 4 or District 5, you know, District 2 and District 1. Obviously, we have a, a number of assets that utilize not just snowplows, but we use heavy equipment. We have loaders and a number of different pieces of equipment that utilize those blue lights, that are, you know, heavy equipment on the road that we rely on heavily. But when you talk about counties such as Persian County, such as Lander County, Elko County, these counties also have the same assets, even Clark County, utilizing that in the Mount Charleston area and portions of North Las Vegas, Nye. That's utilized the same equipment. So this is, you know, to what Commissioner Jung said, I, I think this is something that NACO would help co-sponsor and move forward. I think it is a, it's a statewide issue that needs to be addressed for the safety of our, our drivers throughout the community going forward. And, you know, I also want to point out, you know, our county recorder, Ms. Kaylee Work, did a lot of work on NRS Chapter 111 to allow for an evolution of our legislative laws in, at, down in the Carson City, to make sure that we are addressing no longer discriminatory terms and covenants that prevent individuals from recorded documents. So I think this is important, important work, and I think I'm very proud that these are the bills that we are, are bringing forward. You know, one thing I would like to say in regards to BDRs, couple things that I, I'd like this board on an ongoing, after my departure, is that we work on issues such as with the TMRPA legislation, about how we run with TMRPA. You know, we have district mandatory individuals that have to sit on TMRPA, and so much of those have changed now through redistricting, and no longer know if District 4 is the largest line, it could be a number of our counties that we need to look at to see and identify whether or not those should even be district mandatory anymore. I think should be the most educated individuals that sit on these boards to articulate the needs of a growing, a, a growing community, because it's not necessarily about landmass anymore, it's about infill and how we can continue to service planning within our region. And, and so I would like to, you know, something that maybe we could talk to some legislators in regards to, some simple changes in regards to that. And then as we talk about infrastructure, we saw presentations today from Mr. Mitchell about internet and broadband service. But when we talk about infrastructure needs throughout our state and throughout our country, one of the biggest, it's, infrastructure's not just broadband, but roads and, and safety for our communities. And when we work with our partner to the east of Astoria County, a lot of the issues, a lot of the individuals that live in our county utilize our school systems, are, they live in our county, they utilize our roads, our secondary and tertiary businesses, and a lot of the I-80 roads, and I-80 specifically, potentially roads in the future with lands bills. We've talked about the Northeast Connector, but how do we work with those counties to develop some MOUs in regards to tax abatements and some different things to address funding, so that we can work collegially to address the needs of an ever-growing county and a state here in northern Nevada as our economy continues to grow? And, and then public safety issues as we move forward, you know? I'd like to see some of those issues addressed. Hopefully, we can get more of a robust report from Mr. Alonso and yourself, Ms. Thomas, moving prior into the session about what those, what those potential BDRs may look like and how we can participate, maybe not as our own BDRs, but how we can participate from a standpoint of legislation and providing information. And, and we do, we have a wonderful legislative team. We have team, we have individuals from the Health District, Family Services, our Human Services, I should say, and the Sheriff's Department, all have their own individual in the Health District, have their own individual representatives that go down and help represent issues for Washoe County. But we are seeing challenges, I know at the Sheriff's Office with the 24-hour court, one of the, one of the issues that went in, intake, those types of issues need to be addressed from a financial standpoint. And so what we can do to maybe modify some of the, that legislation that came out of the last session to address some of the needs now that those, those types of bills have been placed into action, how we can evolve those so that those financially can be sustainable and highly efficient moving into, into the future. So, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank this board, because we had a board retreat and stated we wanted to use our BDRs, and I really appreciate this board really proactively looking at what makes sense for us, as Commissioner Jung said, to put our toes in the water and see how this goes. What I really love, I've learned so much from Commissioner Lucy and going through the legislative process, and what I love about the language on the redaction of the discriminatory covenants is that each county commission can decide what they want to do with that. And so we're not pushing our agenda on other counties, and I think that Ms. Rodriguez came up with that and Recorder Work, and I just really appreciate them pushing that forward. And I, I love the, the display blue tail lamps as well, I think that that makes total sense and affects, like, we were saying, all of our districts, and we want to make sure that people are safe. And, and this is, I had no idea that this wasn't even allowed, and it probably comes, these probably come on the snowplows we buy, they probably already are on there. So we're just have these strange laws in, in place, so I'm sure we don't even add them, do we? Yeah, okay, great. And then the, the other item, and I, I don't know if you would know this, Ms. Thomas, but is the Sheriff's Office looking at having some discussions with the state about Lakes Crossing? I know that we just had a lot of issues with capacity and seeing how we can share with Southern Nevada that facility, and I just want to make sure that we're still pushing forward on how can we get a Southern Nevada facility so we can really use that up in the north? And so we're not jailing folks who are really mentally ill. But thank you so much, I really appreciate your work on this, and thank you, Manager Brown, for your work on this as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything else? All right, we will go ahead and, and ask for public comment on item number 20.
There's nobody signed in.
We'll close public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion to support these two BDRs. Yes?
I'd like to make the motion to support these two BDRs in the upcoming 82nd session of the Nevada State Legislature.
As drafted in the staff report?
As drafted in the staff report, sir.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Vice Chair Hill. We have asked for public comment, there was none. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I think motion carries unanimously, very good. Okay, that takes us now to item number 22. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, there's been a request by Commissioner Herman to push item 22.
Commissioner Herman, can you give us a reason why you would like to delay item number 22?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have had a lot of calls on this from citizens, and, and they're, they're concerned about the possible lack of authority on the part of the employees and, and animal services having the legal stature to, to arrest people, actually, and decide whether it's a misdemeanor or not, and this sort of thing. And so that, that's been a concern, and I just was wanting to get a little clarification on that before I would be able to support it.
Okay, you realize today is only a first reading and will not require.
I do.
Okay.
I do.
All right, commissioners, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna hear this item. I, I think we should move forward.
I agree.
Yes.
Comes from the Animal Advisory Board.
And so, and, and correct. Commissioner Jung, you make a, you make a good point, it comes from the Animal Advisory Board, it has been vetted through that group. Ms. Schul, would you talk to us briefly about this? Actually, no, you talk to us briefly about this, and then I'll ask the clerk, go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. Cheyenne Scholl, Director of Regional Animal Services, for the record. As a recap, on the 28th of June, I brought forward a pretty comprehensive overview of Chapter 2 requests to change this particular section of Chapter 55. And today, what I have for you is the actual language for that code amendment. I have an in-depth presentation that I'm prepared to provide to you all, if you would like for me to go over each and every section, largely sticks to the plan in the Chapter 2 report, however, a little bit more in-depth details and overview of what the language actually means in each of those particular areas, and I'm certainly happy to answer any of the concerns of the questions.
Commissioners, what's the desire?
Chairman, may I ask Ms. Schul a couple questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Schul, being that this is a first reading and an introduction to a possible amend, amendment of our code, this code basically allows for us to continue to follow in line with the state, give us the ability to proactively work with our animal services officers to address the needs within our community based upon the changes that we made to our code now, I believe, almost four and a half years ago, or if not longer, to address these. And we've had a substantial time to review and, and look at these and address these, as you've pointed out in previous meetings. This is not anything that is going to be severely allowing our officer the ability to walk on or just take dogs, this is going to be under notification through our process and, and significantly improve our ability to be efficient with those owners and, and actually give the public a little bit more of an understanding about why we're doing what we're doing, not specifically just being able to go in and, and take animals without any kind of cause or reason, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Lucy, through the chair. There is definitely some clarifications that have been made in these code amendments, as well as delineating two different tiers for dangerous and vicious dogs, because currently we only have dangerous, and so everything gets lobbed into that categorization, which really isn't fair if a dog attacks the neighbor's chicken, or if the dog attacks the neighbor's child. And so adding that second tier of vicious, along with the requirements that make sense that go along with that particular egregiousness or behavior of a vicious animal, that's primarily what the focus was, which mirrors in us.
Correct, and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but still, in the state of Nevada, animals are considered property of, of an individual, so not just the dogs or, or cats or whatever may be, you know, causing the harm, but any harm towards another piece of livestock or animal or anything is just as equally, it's an asset, it's a piece of property from one individual to another. So basically, we are allowing for the judicial process between, of damage of property between one and another. So this is helping our officers define and be a little bit more specific in, in regards to their actions, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy, great, those are great questions. So this is, this is essentially mirroring state law. So explain to me, Ms. Schul, just, just because I think it's important to put this on the record, why is it, if it, if it already exists in state law, why do we need to have it mirrored in our own code?
Chair Hartung, we have, state law is very vague. We do have the two categorizations of dangerous and vicious, however, there really aren't any requirements outlined within state law that the, an animal that would have to, or animal owner would have to adhere to. And so it's really, falls on the local government to spell out what those requirements are. And so that's really what we focused on here, is breaking out those two different categorizations, but also we've put in some important changes in here that will allow animal owners to come into compliance much easier. As currently code is written, you have to have a kennel in place in your yard, and what we found through implementation of this code, which was last amended in 2015, is a lot of people don't have a yard, and so putting up a kennel in a, in a condo or an apartment that doesn't have a yard, doesn't make sense. And so we've had the opportunity since 2015 to really flesh out this code, find where the weaknesses are, find where the holes are, and really refine it, working with our advisory board and the community since 2020. We really have discussed this in a lot of open meetings, to hear our community's feedback and areas that we needed to look at and focus. But that's another area that we've worked on, expanding the opportunities for compliance, if you will, and giving people the opportunity to really be responsible pet owners if they do have a dangerous or vicious animal.
You know, Ms. Schul, I just, I want to thank you, since you came on board, you've been so proactive in, in fleshing out a lot of these issues, cleaning up the code, and, and, I mean, it's just important. Most people don't realize that code is a living document.
Right.
And it's, and it's, it's not just the standard, and, and, and we saw that earlier with the BDR request, because we have these things that were, that were established in code, you know, 100-plus years ago, 125 years ago, maybe, who knows? It's, it, I mean, it's been in the code for a long time. It's no longer valid. And so I just, I want to thank you for, for, again, being proactive to make sure that we have these definitions, because ambiguity in the law is not good, and that's, and that's the important part of this. And so I, I genuinely appreciate it. Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in.
You pretty much said what I had to say, Mr. Chair, but I, I never miss an opportunity to say it again, and that is, you are so right. When we hired Ms. Schul, which one day when I'm out of office, I'll tell you the whole story behind the scenes. Ms. Schul was the first professional that ever came to us to run Regional Animal Services, who has had a double budget, thanks to the voters, since 2001, operating budget. We never took the time to find a subject matter expert. First, it was under CSD, and God bless them, they tried the best they could, they don't deal with dogs. Then we put it with the sheriff, again, it's kind of like sheriff to be expecting law enforcement to be experts at search and rescue, two different areas of, I like my law enforcement to know how to enforce law, that's about it, to go to the Kylie Rodney thing, which you all know I'm obsessed with. And then it went to, I think, the manager's office oversaw it, and we finally found Ms. Schul to show up. And let me tell you something, it was a boon for this community, it was a boon for NRS, it was a boon for the state, because we had an expert, a subject matter expert, trained, educated, qualified, experienced to take on something that the voters have been so very generous about, the animal care. So, yes, she's taken, she's, and she's taken a lot of slings and arrows from commissioners even up here, but she was hired specifically to straighten our act out, if I might say it that way, because we had some trouble. We bumbled this, I will say it myself, I've been here 15 years, we bumbled it for nine years until she got here. But she's here, and she has an advisory board that meets once a month for three hours or more, whether they need it or not. So this has been heavily vetted, and I have no problem introducing this if somebody else wouldn't like to, and I, I have no interest in further opening this up to public criticism when they've had six months of discussion of open meetings that you could attend on Zoom as well. So I am ready to introduce as your liaison, too. Oops, sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
No, 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 it's not that, we, we need, we need a bill number.
Oh, right.
Commissioner. Oh, that. It's not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not shooing you away, that's, that's, that's not it at all. Thank you, Ms. Schul, is there any other questions for staff at this time? Madam Clerk, would you, would you give us an introduction?
Yes, sir. This will be Bill Number 1882, if introduced. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 55, Animals in Foul, by repealing a section duplicate of state law related to harboring a vicious dog, by adding a section making it unlawful to fail to quarantine or surrender for quarantine, biting animals or animals that have been in close contact with an animal suspected or known to have rabies, by adding a section governing euthanasia of vicious dogs, by amending provisions related to the definition of dangerous dog, vicious dog, animal, substantial bodily harm, and provocation, the dangerous and vicious dog termination process, exemptions under. process, exemptions under which a dog may not be found dangerous or vicious, the requirements for dangerous and vicious dog registration, the requirements for relocating or transferring ownership of a dangerous or vicious dog, unlawful acts by the owner or keeper of a dangerous or vicious dog, empowerment of a dog both before and after dangerous or vicious dog determination, and by updating a section governing the criminal and civil penalties for violation of Chapter 55 and all other matters properly relating thereto. And if supported, set a public hearing for a second reading on September 13th.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Jung, the floor is yours for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce the bill as read by Madam Clerk because Commissioner Lucy keeps interrupting me over here. Thank you.
So that is, that is, that is Bill 1882, Commissioner Jung?
Yes.
Would like to introduce 1882. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The second reading to occur on September 13th.
And will be here in bells on September 13th.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, that, Mr. Manager, rather, excuse me. I, I'm fumbling as well today, and I apologize. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number 23, please?
Item 23 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
There is nobody signed in.
We'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us to item number 24.
24 is Commissioners, County Managers, Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions, Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, I have Commissioner Lucy signed in.
Thank you, Chairman. I do appreciate the opportunity. A couple of things that did shake loose for me, in our last meeting, we did approve, we had an item and, from the state in regards to the opioid dollar settlements that are coming down. I know Manager Brown and his team are working on those settlements, but I do want to, hopefully this board, I did, was, I had an opportunity to visit Las Vegas on Friday and meet with the Clark County Commissioners and members of the legislature down there. And we do need to put a plan together that utilizes those dollars. And, you know, obviously, our settlement dollars are not in the same size as Clark County's, but we can be highly efficient with those opioid dollars. We've been working on that for quite some time, so I'd like to see something sometime soon to appropriate and allocate those dollars for the benefit. And then, last but not least, I do want to continue to thank NDOT for their continued support of, of programs at, in Pyramid Way and a number of issues out there. But we do still need to address, hopefully, the issues on Mount Rose Highway. When you go to Las Vegas and you see the improvements in Las Vegas and compared to the big, the improvements here in Northern Nevada, we are drastically underfinanced and underserved in the north. I understand that it is a very much of a juggling game to allocate dollars when, based upon population and where those dollars come from. However, to, to negate the entire state because a majority of our population lives in Las Vegas, yes, their traffic is significantly worse. Spending time on the, on the 215 and the I-15 and going through Project Neon, you can see the need that they have down there, but that does not shortfall our needs up here in the north in regards to continued expansion as we look at a number of issues. And then one last thing I would like to bring up that I personally experienced with Tamwa, this, for everybody out there that's paying attention in digital land, Tamwa did move to more, instead of a paper invoice or a paper billing statement, in July, they moved to a, if you, a paperless statement. And if you did not opt in or opt out of getting a paperless statement and wish to have a paper statement, they immediately converted you. And my wife and I missed our statement for the month of July and felt that one of us had paid it and nobody did, and our water was turned off due to non-payment for two months. And so we quickly rectified that issue, but something that Tamwa failed to get out to all of their individuals that were on, that they had to move to either a paperless statement or opt out of the paperless statement, something that they should address going forward. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. And so that was one of the couple of things that maybe we need to help either Tamwa with a rollout to all of our constituents about their water usage and, because I'm sure if I'm, if it happened to me, there are probably other people it happened to as well. So with that, Chairman, that is all I have to offer this morning.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. And I will, I will follow up with the Tamwa issues. I appreciate that. And I, I want to, I want to thank you for bringing up the situation with NDOT. I'm, I'm appreciative of NDOT, but I think you're absolutely right. I invited NDOT to, in fact, to drive. I invited the, the director and the deputy director to take a trip out the Pyramid Highway, especially at the far north end where it is two lanes and 65 miles an hour. It's a, it's a white knuckle ride out there every single day. And, and so I, that invitation still stands with, with anyone who would like to go. I would love to take the governor out there. That would be, that would be a thrill for me, and maybe him too. Because it's, it's, it's scary on that end of the Pyramid Highway, again, where it is two lanes and, and high speeds, and you have a lot of people very congested. Thank you, Commissioner Jung, you're exactly right, a lot of people entering and leaving the highway. And, and so we, we absolutely need to address some of those issues. And again, Commissioner Lucy, I'm appreciative of you bringing that up. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, Commissioners. We are adjourned.